Ladies and gentlemen, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the Union Township Board Trustees Meeting Agenda for June 10th, 2025, 6:00 PM. Mr. Campbell at the record show all three trustees are present. Mr. Campbell, do we have any correspondence from fiscal office tonight?
No, sir, I have none. Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, I'd like to move forward with proclamation, special presentations. I'd like to welcome Tim Stevens with IAFF Local 3412, the executive board to the podium for scholarship recipient recognition and presentation.
Good evening, everybody. I have with me Captain Adam Dressler and firefighter Brendan Chassel, both well involved in our local. I'm excited to be here tonight to represent Local 3412 for the special presentation of two $1,000 scholarships from our benefit fund. These are awarded to outstanding students of Union Township. We are fortunate to have both recipients here with us tonight. I'd like to take a moment to highlight their achievements. Addison, Allison, you might, someone up there? Stand aside there. So, we'll start with Addison. She's graduated West Claremont High, who finished with an impressive GPA, 3.9055. Addison has been accepted to Marshall University, where she plans to pursue a career in prenatal care, working in a hospital or clinic setting. Following her is Allison Schaefer, right? She also graduated from West Claremont High with a GPA of 3.7. Allison is set to attend UC Blue Ash, where she'll be studying nursing. Her goal is to achieve her RN, ultimately becoming a nurse practitioner. So, we wish both Addison and Allison the best of luck in their future endeavors and we're confident that they will achieve great success. So, with that, we'd like to present big checks. That's all we have tonight.
Yeah, Allison and Addison, you guys want to step up to the podium a minute? We're gonna grill ya. It's gonna be an example. Hey, we just as a board, we want to say congratulations, thank you for your dedication to your learning and what you're gonna give and do for the community. It's incredible to have you be just exemplary role models for your peers and those around you. Trustee Dills, do you have a few words you'd like to share?
I would. And then first, Dressler and Chassel, and Tim, appreciate you all. How many applicants did you go through and how many hours did you spend till you found these two ladies?
We went through about a half a dozen applicants and they probably spent a good six to eight hours deliberating over who they should give to.
Appreciate you volunteering guys' time in picking these two girls. The 3.9 GPA, 3.7 GPA. Luckily, in order to be a trustee, they don't check my high school GPA, so, you know, but incredible. I definitely did not get that high, so that's incredible. And I heard Marshall, then UC, is that right? Both going for nursing, nurse practitioner, is that right?
I'm going for nursing.
Yeah, I'm going for medical imaging.
Very cool, very cool. Appreciate you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you so much for this opportunity.
You're welcome. Congratulations, and our firefighters clearly chose two great ladies, so appreciate you being here tonight. Obviously, your parents are here, right?
Yes.
They gotta be proud. You wanna point them out real quick?
Absolutely.
Yeah, go, point out your parents real quick. They did twelve years, yeah? Yeah. Love it, love it. That's all you got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, trustee Becker.
You ladies are very impressive. Like trustee Dills, I wasn't exactly a top student in high school. In fact, I barely had enough credits to graduate. So, you are off to a much better start than they. I kinda turned things around in college. I got better as I grew out of it. But hey, hey, thank you for your hard work and you've earned these scholarships and I wish you very much.
Thank you.
That's all, Chairman.
All right, hey, thank you. And again, this couldn't be possible without IAFF 3412. So, thank you for the effort that you guys do to build into the community, do this type of engagement, reach out, and you know, what type of recognition that that brings, but also opportunity for you guys to serve in other ways, so we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's great.
Yeah, we can stick around and do them. And for all the proclamations and special presentations, we can, when we wrap up, we'll come down and get a couple group pictures as well. At this time, recognition of donation for Union Township Canine Officer Canine Gunner, Purina Foundation and Cincinnati Commercial Class. So, if we can have Canine Gunner, an officer handler, Andrew Gozink. Come on up to the podium and then also, yeah, if Purina's joining you in Cincinnati Commercial Class.
From Purina?
And?
Yeah, so.
From Purina?
Yeah, thanks for giving the opportunity tonight. We're excited to support Union Township in this wonderful program with this wonderful pet. My name's Mike Farito, I'm the factory manager at the new factory we're building over in Batavia. And I'm here to represent Purina in terms of the donation and the check to support the purchase of Gunner for Union Township, so.
Awesome. Thank you, you guys, don't look at me. We'll get some group ones, too. Hey, that's great. Thank you for what you're doing in the community and being a blessing on the community. And Officer Gozink, how does this impact you and Gunner and what's it do for you?
Well, honestly, sir, I mean, it's been a blessing. You can see my youngest son, I think he controls the dog more than I do, especially at home. We'll do obedience work with my wife and rock the household. She's the same way. Huge tool for us, it's a huge opportunity from the township, and I've got nothing but positive things to say, you know. It's weird that we're here. Officer Perkins was a mentor to me, so kind of follow him in his footsteps and then started Marshall. Had desire to be a canine and he's actually the one that kept me in the process whenever I was competing against Officer Wally, so.
Okay.
Couldn't make it tonight, but wanted to make sure that they knew that, you know, they're the reason I'm here, so.
Awesome. How old's Gunner?
So, he turned one back in April. So, we're actually on the lower end of things and he's accelerating quite well.
All right, is he through all of his training now?
We have. We completed all of our training April 25th. We are state certified in narcotics, well, narcotic detection, apprehension and tracking.
Awesome. Any trustee Dills?
Mike, first of all, appreciate you very much and very, very cool Purina to do this and be a good neighbor and sponsor. Really appreciate that. Purina also sponsored our dog parks as well, played a big role in that, so really, really appreciate you very much. Yeah, and I tell you what, my son kind of met Gunner. This is actually his favorite dog now because they share the same name. And so, my son's name is Gunner as well and appreciate the coin you gave him, by the way. That's really neat of you, so. But, yeah, welcome. Appreciate your introduction. That's great. Yeah, appreciate you very much.
Thanks.
Trustee Becker?
I have a question for Gunner. I'll ask you instead. Does Gunner have or does he need a bulletproof vest?
So, it will come with time, sir. We're still in the growth stage, so if we were to get him fitted now, it may not fit him come six months from now. And while the threat is real, and I know that our department will take care of that in the long term, it does add a lot of heat to the canines. And now, especially with the heat wave coming in and blowing his coat, it's kind of a blessing in disguise as well.
Okay, fair enough. All right, well, and I want to thank Purina for your donation. We love Purina, what you do here for the community. And my cat loves Purina, so everyone's happy.
It'll be made right down the road, so.
All right, and Chief, if we can keep everyone on the podium, do you want to intro the next?
Sir, thank you, Mr. Logan. Sergeant Wilson has got a plaque that we'd like to give Mr. Farito and Purina in appreciation for their contribution to canine program. Very generous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. All right, moving on, Union Township Years of Service Recognition Program. Mr. Taylor, could you introduce? We'll bring Patrick Eubright and Jason Sampson up. You want to share a little bit about their years of service?
Patrick, or Ms. Eubright, has been with the township for 20 years. He started in the parks crew, I believe, and then shortly thereafter, he transferred down to the cemetery where he stayed there till he became the sexton. He's been the sexton, he was for about 14 years. And then he, my assistant, Sean, he retired and then Pat took over as the assistant. And then, so he's just, he's done a wonderful job for us. He is committed to the township, so I can't speak highly enough about him.
That's great. And for Jason?
And Jason, similar to the same path, but he is, he started, I think, on our road crew and then maybe in our parks crew and then transferred to the cemetery where he stayed there until Pat became the Assistant Service Director. Then obviously, Jason applied for the sexton's position and he was promoted to the sexton. He's been there for about two years. They've been here, they got hired on the same night, so 20 years ago.
That's what I'm looking at, seeing June 29th, 2025, celebrating 20 years for both of you. Did you guys apply at the same time?
There was one other one, but he couldn't make it here tonight as well. We hired three that night.
Oh, yeah?
Yep. All three of the employees have been wonderful assets to the township. You know, they're team players, so they do a lot for us.
That's wonderful. That's great. Trustee Dills, do you have a couple words you'd like to share?
Patrick and Jason, 20 years. Appreciate you guys very much, your dedication to township. And is this your family's year?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, please introduce them, please, yeah.
My wife Rachel, my daughter Savannah and Shelby.
Good, good, good. I see that, yeah. Did you have your family here?
My family's up here.
That's okay, yeah. Hey, thanks for giving, I mean, 20 years is a long time and I know you had a lot of late nights. And I know when you start out, a lot of road crew, a lot of shows, not one, and a lot of tough days and nights. And so, I appreciate you both very much. 20 years is a long time. Thanks for being here. And you're basically second in command and basically third in command, right? So, appreciate y'all's leadership as well. So, thanks for being here very much.
Thank you.
Trustee Becker?
I just want to know, which of you two have the best stories about Matt Taylor? Who wants to go first?
They're just rumors. I don't know if they're stories.
All right, we'll let it go. I just want to thank you both for your 20 years of service. Your efforts have been very much appreciated.
Thank you.
All right, hey, yeah, awesome, incredible 20 years and stick around for a while, will you, please? And we've got some to share with you here.
I got VIP tickets, too. I'm like. I do.
You ready to meet him this year at the Police Night Out?
Yeah, I'm actually excited.
Is he gonna, is he gonna take Joe down at Police Night Out this year in August?
Depending on where we are with, you know, our individual training will be the.
Yeah.
We still have habit for that.
Joe's happy to be the first person he goes after, right? Joking.
It's a good looking dog.
All right, gentlemen, moving forward with Personnel Action, seeing none. Public comments. Mr. McCormick, are there any public comment cards?
No, but I think this gentleman might have one.
Do we have any public comment cards?
No.
Nope, seeing none. Department reports. Fire and Emergency Medical Services Chief Austin Clements, please.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. In the month of May, the Fire Department responded to 142 fire and service calls, 558 emergency medical responses. We made patient contact with 513 patients, transporting 408 of those patients. We completed 630 hours of training. Were involved in 14 public education details. Hosted EMT Medic Ride Along time for a total of eight hours, completed 58 life safety inspections and were a part of 13 inspections with the Claremont County Building Department. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chief. Trustee Dills?
I do, but I'll wait till Chief Reese is done as well.
All right, trustee Becker?
I'll pass.
All right, thank you. Police Chief, Chief Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Logan. The month of May, our communication center handled 5,186 calls for service for police, fire and EMS. We processed 514 juvenile and adult court-related documents for the courts. We processed 135 court notices requiring officers' personal appearance in court. Processed five Rule 16s for the prosecutor's office, issued two vendor permits, handled 149 records requests and redacted 28 body camera videos. In the area of public affairs, officers conducted two public relations events in the month of May that included citizen ride-alongs. And we sent a representative of our honor guard up to London, Ohio for the 37th Ohio Peace Officers Memorial Ceremony. We also hosted Miami Township's Junior Police Academy and allowed them to use our Milo range. And we continue to get a lot of use out of our Milo. In the area of operations, officers took 376 incident reports, 110 crash reports, made 799 traffic stops, issued 130 citations, 578 written warnings, made 59 criminal arrests, 93 traffic arrests and served 31 warrants. Our honor guard participated in three events during the month of May. The first was the casket guard and the cemetery ceremony for Hamilton County Deputy Larry Henderson's funeral. The second event was the Claremont County Chamber of Commerce Law Enforcement banquet. And we also assisted in the Veterans for America Chapter 649's annual Memorial Day Ceremony at Veterans Park. For the month, we totaled 336 hours of training for our police department employees and currently, we have just one opening for police officer position. That concludes my report, sir.
Thanks, Chief. Trustee Dills?
First off, Chief, your honor guard has been very, very busy. It's an honor to do that for them, so please pass along our appreciation. I know as the months get hotter and hotter and they're doing outside and they gotta be at the perfect position of attention, it's very difficult. So, just please let them know how much we appreciate them. I'll say, guys, we had two pretty bad instances, you know, here in the township recently. First one was a couple weeks ago, a teen ended their life and then right after that, we had a three-year-old drown in a pool. I won't speak much on that case as the investigation is still ongoing, but tough, 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 you know, to be a police officer and firefighter, very tough. And what's crazy is our firefighter crew that did the suicide was the same crew that did the three-year-old. And, you know, that's just, that's just a lot of pressure. And these guys have got to go home to their families and put their game face on in front of their kids and their spouses and act like nothing even happened. And so, just, and actually, our police were the very first ones on scene with the three-year-old, correct? And so, that's a lot of pressure. And so, just, we love them, care about them, please just let them know that we, anything they need. That's one thing where I'm not a fiscally responsible on. Any amount of money we gotta throw at a professional doctor and counselor to make sure our guys and gals are good and their minds clear, whatever. So, if they, I would strongly encourage everyone that was on scene, if they, I mean, that's PTSD stuff that they see. So, any help that they need, they have our full support in any way, shape or form, whatever that means, so, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. That's all I got, sir.
Trustee Becker?
Yeah, Chairman. Yeah, before I get to Chief Reese, Chief Clements, is there anything more you can tell us about that tragic drowning of that little girl, three-year-old? Like, what happened?
Yeah, so unfortunately, there's, I believe there is an investigation going on just to try to cross the T's, dot the I's and try to put a story to it. Unfortunately, it just, it sounds like it was just a tragic event where a parent lost sight of the child and unfortunately, the child was underwater a little bit too long. I know crews did, from police department and fire department collectively, working together, did absolutely everything in their power, did an excellent job. It's just one of those tragic situations.
Yeah, it was horrifying. Speaking of horrifying, I got a couple things from Chief Reese here on the investigative report. So, two of them. The first one has to do with a seven-week-old infant that went to Children's Hospital, had multiple broken bones, including a skull fracture. It was determined that the injuries were consistent with child abuse. Is somebody in jail or is somebody going to jail soon?
The investigation's pending at this time, but I'm confident that we'll have a positive solution to it. That's all said and done, sir.
All right, good. Next one I have, believe it or not, it's actually been more horrifying. And I had to ask the chief before the meeting if I'm interpreting these numbers correctly, because there's shorthand in these reports. An 81-year-old man is the suspect. The juvenile victim is a five-year-old girl. The man confessed to the offense. This is some type of sex offense. Anything you can tell us about that?
Can't really comment on that yet, sir, because it hasn't made its way through the courts, hasn't been adjudicated, but we do have charges on a suspect in that case, sir.
When I was in the General Assembly, I wrote a bill to elevate the crimes of rape and child abuse to capital crime, subject to the death penalty. This reminded me why. Thank you, Chief. That's all, Chairman.
Thanks, trustee Becker. Yeah, Chief Clements and Chief Reese, the likewise of what trustee Dills had to say as far as the first responders, the firefighters and the police officers, and I'm sure it's the same police officer also that showed up for both on both of those incidents as well. Yeah, if you guys ever need different support or authority from the board, I'd be happy to be able to lend that and do that. I know that just when you start to go down the policy path of what's a threshold of additional services or time off and I know it always gets complicated because it gets complex into then different overall union conversations and the measure of merit or threshold. And I wish that that wasn't the case. I wish it was very straightforward. Having to deal with, you know, a three-year-old or a teen suicide, to me, my just heart goes out to our first responders that are serving in capacity. So, anything we can ever do to help, I'm supportive of. And also, you know, I hate that it's just, it's sad to say, it seems like it's the beginning of summer and routinely, within the tri-state area, something like that takes place and happens with drowning. And it is extremely easy to. I've got a three-year-old just the same and my wife and I both said, like, not even going into the pool enclosure or the fence area without the water wings on, because it's just, they take off, it's so quick, it's so fast. And there's so much commotion and things that are going on. It makes me think how school programs do backpack drives and coat drives initiatives like that. It made me think, you know, do you save a life by having like a water wing drive? Or do you get the messaging out that just reminds people at the beginning of the year how quick something tragic can happen and to put the onus on them? So, I would think about just some of our social media messaging and some of our reach out that we do within the community. But at the very least, I think. But at the very least, I think to share the message about, you know, the water safety, those aspects. You know, whatever we can do to help press that message. Thank you, gentlemen. Service Department, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Luke. In the Cemetery Division, from March 1st through the 31st, 12 burials were performed, generating $7,300. 14 resident graves were purchased, generating $9,800. One non-resident grave was purchased, which were $1,700. Seven columbarium niches were purchased, generating $12,400. The total amount generated for the period was $36,666. In the Parks Division, landscape area maintenance continues on township properties and parks. New picnic tables were installed at Veterans Park. And a fishing tournament was held on May 17th at Clepper Park. And flowers were planted at multiple township facilities. In the Roads Division, a total of 112 potholes were repaired over 24 township roads. And roadside mowing has started along township roads. And 32 work orders were completed on multiple township roads. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Trustee Dills?
Just, Mr. Taylor, appreciate that. Veterans Park, update? So they were supposed to mark the and lay out the playground set today. I don't think they got that done, but their equipment is out there. They're supposed to start digging this week. So that was the latest as of this morning. They're still on, they're telling me they're still on track for August 7th.
Okay, good deal.
If it will quit raining for any length of time, that will be helpful.
Appreciate you, Joe.
Thank you, sir.
Trustee Becker?
Yeah, I'm good.
Mr. Taylor, what's the timeline for the splash pad at Clepper?
So they are in construction, they told me, three to four weeks. So they've started, they're trying to finish up at the exact same time with the water line. So the water line is currently in process and so is the splash pad. They've got everything formed up, they're starting to install, I guess, I guess, if you want to call it the guts of the system.
Okay, great. I'd like to see any research you have on turf parks? Like, is that Riverside?
Yes.
I know that generates revenue, sport fees, but it's really about generating traction and community to come together. And I think that Union Township, I, you know, I'd at least like to understand what the pros and the cons. You know, what the revenue and what the costs are. And I think that there's, I'm sure there's partners in the community that, once we have a perspective of that, that if it's something we'd be interested in pursuing, that we could try to engage partners in the community. And those sport teams, you know, work with different public entities on turf fields of that sort. So it'd be something to get some information on. And I mean, I'd love to see that with some concept, you know, in a month's time or so. Just if you can work it in, now it's busy in the summer, but just get an idea. And I'd say, I guess, Mr. Wright on that, but it'd be really, really great to get better understanding of that for the community. And then also, the couple-year-long project that we were just picking away on the back continues to look better and better every day with the trail. I think that that's, again, having the foresight to clean that up. That was dirty and, you know, not able to be utilized is gonna reveal, already has revealed a beautiful space, but, you know, obviously, when it's finished. So, great work with that, we'll just keep that going. All right. Do you have anything else, Trustee Becker? Planning zoning, Mr. Mark McCormick.
Thank you. For the month of May, we had 21 inspections, received 29 complaints. 12 complaints were unfounded. We had 31 citation, warning citations issued. Three 15-day non-compliance letters, two 30-day violation letters. Eight cases resolved. We had 301 illegal signs removed. We had 46 violations for the monthly total. And 12 re-inspections and violations with 10 nuisances filed. And a whole host for this evening. We have, for permit activity, one change of use, 10 signs, one temporary sales permit, one temporary sign, 10 single-family dwelling units, four additions, five decks, 10 accessory permits, 14 permits for pools and/or fences, or 56 permits for the month, revenue of $8,740. And $50 for the Fire Department revenue. And to kind of dovetail the end of Mr. Taylor's report, we have the swings on their way for Veterans Park. And those will also be installed before the fall for the wall that's coming. So we're just waiting on that.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Trustee Dills?
Mr. McCormick, smooth month. Appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
Trustee Becker?
Pass.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Appreciate it. Mr. Wright?
Thank you, sir, for the month of June. Just a little bit of update, we touched on it previously, the water main group project's now underway. They are making good progress on that splash pad. Excavation is commenced. You can kind of see the, kind of the initial area, and then there'll be some surrounding improvements that accompany that. Community interest is very strong in that. Just some beautification efforts. Mr. Taylor's been working on irrigation and the county roundabout improvements. It's consistent with our, kind of our joint agreement that we work with on the county to make sure those spaces stay nice. So we've got roundabouts two and three done. Roundabout one still needs some work because of the ongoing construction there. Put in my report, obviously, the project continues back here. Next up, we have conduit installations, drainage improvements. Just so everybody's clear, it'll go back in a 304, I think, is 304 crushed aggregate surface while we wait on Duke Energy to install the lights. We've had communication with them as of this week. They're waiting on materials to come in. Once they're in and they're done digging, then we'll go in and put the final surface course in. So, you know, again, it takes a little bit of time to do these things when you've got a lot of moving parts. But that, Mr. Taylor hit the nail on the head, it has got to stop raining. And a lot of our projects are suffering because of that. Playground layout at Veterans Park, you know, all that stuff is TBD, you know, as far as gotta dry up over there, too, but hopefully that excavation will commence soon. The CIC audit's now generally complete. I appreciate Mr. Campbell and Mr. McCormick's assistance in that. The recommendation is for an unmodified clean audit, and I'll update the board once we receive that. The SID audits are ongoing. I think those are pretty close to being done, is that right, Mr. Campbell? We'll have some housekeeping things that we have to do with regard to public records because, you know, historically, we've been able to take shelter under the Township's records policy. New auditor, new interpretation. The board will have to take formal action, which we'll schedule in our annual meetings in July. So that'll take place. The, we will be bringing forward some records retention schedule, housekeeping. We are gonna add some schedules, you know, consistent with that. And we'll hopefully have that being in July as well. Township audit continues. The only reason it's continuing is because we have the SIDs and the Jeds and the CIC and all those, you know, related entities that are sort of tied in. That's generally been a very productive and yet informative process. We'll expect to generally clean audit with some recommendations on some some good best practices on cybersecurity training and disaster recovery testing. I'm already working with Lieutenant Blankenship and Brandon in that regard. The amended public records policy's been posted. We have an agenda item tonight to talk about UTTV network architecture. The MS billing rate structure adjustments that the board previously approved have been sent forward to Med account for implementation. We are, you'll see a couple purchase orders for equipment for the new service garage run come in tonight. And then there'll be some broader improvements that are handled through the CIC for HVAC and ventilation upgrades and some other things Mr. Taylor's working on currently. We do have a public hearing tonight for the new community authority things the board's seen periodically here. We have a resolution in front of us to accept the walking trail or a portion of it at the former high school site, which was included as part of the development and will become a public amenity that will connect Black Buxton and Glen Asty Withamsville. The board will consider some text amendments in a zoning case in July. We have several properties for nuisance abatement. There is an amended permanent appropriation for the board to consider, just mid-year housekeeping on that. Chief Clements continues to work on his capital grant request for UTFD. And, you know, the work on the county engineer and Choice One Elmont Drive project continues. I am pleased to report that the county, actually, because of the drainage improvements, we're gonna be able to extend that all the way through the second, there's two roads there, Elmont and Vermona. We're gonna extend that through the intersection, so you will get a dual left. I believe that's what they're working on because they're gonna pick up a cross culvert and fix that entire drainage area. So we might see some cost-sharing splits on that, consistent with our prior agreement. The demolition have occurred, demolition has occurred in Mount Carmel for the county demolition program. The other property on 125 is still in process, but that was addition by subtraction. We're very pleased that that came down finally. And it was, I drove through there one day and the building was there. And I drove through there the next day and it was a pile. So all very positive in that, and...
Which building was that?
It's the old, oh, it's Bank something.
Bank Line?
Bank, yeah, something.
By Grace Towing?
Yeah, by Grace Towing. It was the white building that kind of had fallen into disrepair, had a fire a long time ago. So I think it's gone now.
It is.
That's positive. Apparently, it had a big safe in it, but I couldn't get in there quick enough to see it, so. Anyway, that concludes my report.
Trustee Dills?
Would you like to entertain a grand opening for our pathway?
I think that it's something that the community will enjoy over time. I mean, I think that, you know, when we get it done, I don't, I just don't have a delivery date on it yet.
Fair enough, yeah, yeah, okay.
I just don't want to put the pavement down until Duke's done digging.
No, I get it, I get it.
They gotta put light poles on.
I feel bad, whoever's gonna do that old-school records-keeping audit, that sounds really fun. Perhaps Mr. Becker would like to volunteer for that.
Oh, with the Records Commission?
Yeah.
Oh, so the Records Commission is a creature of statute in that it is the fiscal officer and the chairman of the Board of Trustees.
Oh, there you go.
So unfortunately, it's Mr. Luke and Mr. Campbell that draw that meeting. But we'll have everything buttoned up, and then we have to file with the state.
This is a question comment for both you and Mr. McCormick. How are we, has there been, I know we had a few, we haven't had any in a while. So the business corridor, you know, looking at zoning, looking at, you know, our current township laws. Is there anything that's erroneous, that's outdated, that needs to be changed at all? For example, no commercial trucks parked or no commercial vehicles. So if you take a Toyota Camry and slap some commercial lettering on it, you are technically illegal in the township. What an erroneous, ridiculous rule that we had, and we clearly got rid of that, right? So is there any, the book's pretty thick, is there any, you know, erroneous laws that we have that we need to change? Or we gotta look at?
So I think Mr. McCormick's done a good job bringing forward these text amendments that the board initiated last month, which will provide clarity to our overlay process and some timelines on that. And then it'll simplify our table. Right now, our principal uses and our accessory uses are sort of hard. You gotta go to two different chapters, just to put it all in one place. And then what was the other amendment, Mark?
We're working on lighting standards was another one.
Codification of kind of current best practices that we follow.
Right, like, we don't even have foot candle measurements, but we're referencing that they have to have photometric lighting plans. And there was one other one. So there's four that'll be going to the zoning commission and hopefully coming back to the next trustee meeting. And I keep a working list, and that includes things from Mr. Wright or things that we hear from the trustees or things of the staff here. So we are elevating those as we can, working with the zoning commission.
Good, appreciate that. What about, like, 125 Beachmont and that business corridor? Have you ever thought about expanding that at all a little bit?
So, you know, we can always, as part of, you know, we're midway through our land use planning cycle with our Horizon 2030 plan. What I would recommend is if we do just a plan update, which we have to do anyway for OKI every five years to get the best scoring possible through their transportation grant program. Ours is 10 years old. I argued that you need 10 years to at least implement the plan. The first five years, people are adjusting to it. What I, I think we could look at the corridor boundaries at that time. And then, once we do that, then we can bring in an amendment to the overlay district that'll match those planning districts, and that would be consistent with that process. It might make sense. It, right now, it generally follows sort of the, if my memory serves me, kind of the B1 designation on 125, which back in 1959 was, they went so many feet off the center line. And then we end up with a bunch of split parcels and all that. So it's probably, you know, as, the overlay has been probably the most productive tool for us to encourage new development on 125 because so many of those lots are non-conforming, they're hard to develop. You know, we do have the PDA that we use from time to time. But it might warrant looking at those boundaries, you know, as part of an update. So we can certainly, you know, look to advance that to the board here, hopefully in the next, you know, few months or whatever.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Chairman, it's all you got. Thanks. Trustee Becker?
I'm good.
Mr. Wright, hey, thank you. Appreciate it very much. Gentlemen, we have a public hearing. This is a public hearing for Union Township New Community Authority Formation, Public Hearing Resolution 2025-31. Mr. Wright, do you wanna introduce this public hearing?
Yep, so this is the final step in the creation of the new community authority. So the board has adopted a resolution approving a filing. They have accepted, done a resolution of sufficiency. We have provided the public notice. And we are now holding the public hearing, which must occur between 30 and 45 days of the filing petition. Basically, this just establishes the NCA, gets the tool ready for us. There are some properties along, I'm calling it Glen Asty I Colts. It's like the middle stub that we would look to position this. But the NCA is expanded, we're expandable by the same process. And it's just another tool in the economic development toolbox for us where we can do some creative things, you know, just like we do with TIFF, just like we do with Jeds, the whole nine yards. So I think this positions us well, and, you know, happy to answer any questions on that.
Trustee Dills?
I'm good.
Trustee Becker?
I'm good.
All right. This is, yeah, this is a public hearing, so we'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone here that wants to speak as a proponent, opponent?
So you need a motion to open the public hearing?
Need a motion?
Motion to open it.
Do you have that motion to open the public hearing?
Summated.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
The public hearing is open at 6:44 PM.
All right. You guys got the preview. Is there anyone that would like to be a proponent, an opponent? Or just be on record for the public hearing? All right, gentlemen, this is an entertaining motion to close the public hearing for New Community Authority Formation.
I think we should keep it open a little longer. Just kidding. Summated.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
We'll close the public hearing at 6:45 PM.
I mean, I'm with you, we could just leave it open till the end of the meeting.
There you go.
And I would note, Mr. Chairman, that we do have a resolution that is later in the legislative...
Correspondent.
Yep.
Gentlemen, old business, is there any old businesses you have for the table? I have none. New business. Item Alpha is the consent agenda for items one. Approval of minutes, May 13th, 2025, regular meeting minutes. Item two, approval of payments is prepared by Ron Campbell, Mr., the fiscal officer. Item three, approval of monthly financial report is prepared by Ron Campbell, the fiscal officer. Gentlemen, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Summated.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item Bravo, motion agenda. Gentlemen, item one, approval of purchase orders. Do you have a motion to approve the purchase orders?
Summated.
Do you want Mr. Wright to speak?
I'll have him introduce it, yeah.
Summated.
Second.
All right, Mr. Wright, you could share about the purchase orders.
Yes, sir. The first one is an administrative purchase order to the Union Township Community Improvement Corporation. This is the last piece of the re-implementation of the Mount Carmel Revitalization Grant Program in the amount of $250,000, consistent with the authorization and the legislation that the board passed and the CIC ratified. So that'll fund that program. Second is to Locality Media Inc. for the Fire Department, for the... Second is to Locality Media Inc. for the fire department, for the annual fee for our size up in hydrant module software, in the amount of $23,500. The third is for information, for the information technology IT department for Government Connection Inc. to replace a storage array for the data center in the amount of $27,944.68, that is a much needed upgrade, we are reaching the end of useful life, and we are running out of space, so that should buy us a significant amount of time there. The next one is to Wex Bank for police, for estimated fuel usage, the amount of $26,000. The next one is to Otte Equipment Service Inc. for the service department, for 3919 Bach Buxton Road, for a facility-wide air compressor system, that's a compressor that'll run the whole facility, the amount of $25,000. The next one is to the service department, to Otte Equipment Service Inc., and again, for 3919, and that's a four-post lift, Mr. Taylor, is that mobile, or is it fixed?
That one is a fixed one.
Fixed mount lift?
We have a mobile one.
So we'll have two lifts there, then at the facility, and the mobile, we have the ability to move around our various stations as well, so, and that's for $38,000, and happy to answer any questions, the department heads are happy to answer any questions.
Trustee Dills.
Mr. Wright, have you had any applicants or anyone apply for the Mount Carmel yet?
We've had a couple people that have expressed some interest in it, I think Mr. McCormick, they're directing inquiries to that, you have two, how many, two or three?
So, I have a couple people that I've talked to specifically, me, I should be meeting with one here in the next couple of days, and then another one I have met with several times, which is the dilapidated building that we have discussed.
A former drive-through.
And they have a very interesting concept of what they want to do with that property, which I more or less pitched them the idea, and they are running with it, so.
Good, good work.
I'm, I'm trying to knock some of those off by just talking to them.
Great, so, and we'll hand, you know, we'll handhold them all the way through the process, and, you know, once we determine, you know, I think the most important thing is to make sure it's eligible, and we have a pretty robust pre-application process to, to identify that, and then we can kind of walk them through the application process, make sure everything gets notarized, talk to them what the expectations are for filing and all that, and records keeping, so, I think it's going to be good, I'm excited about reinvigorating the program and getting some meaningful change in Mount Carmel, just, and we'll start to see some other stuff kind of happen there as well, so, it's, it's positive.
All right, thank you. Trustee Becker.
I was just thinking about Mount Carmel, I mean, there's a good progress being made with both the Wawa and McDonald's, they're taking shape, so, it's always good to see.
I'm not a business expert, but, I mean, there's, there's two McDonald's right there, you just have to wonder, are they both going to, I guess they'll thrive, I don't really go to McDonald's very often, but we're talking mile and a half down the road from each other, but, no, works, whatever works, works, clearly their brains are smarter than mine, so they must think they're going to be busy, so.
It's, it's, I think they're going to start to set off the dominoes, which is good.
Yeah.
All right, gentlemen, so, roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Yeah.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item two, UT TV hardware upgrade and cost memory in discussion, we have to have a motion on that to have a discussion?
No, it's just the agenda.
Okay, just under the motion, all right, what's, what's, you want to take it, Mr. Wright, or who's got the floor on this one?
Sure, and I'm going to ask Justin to set the camera on autopilot for us, and come out to the podium to be able to answer architectures, you know, network architecture specific questions, because I don't know that, but he'll join us here in a minute. But basically where we're at, we have a, we have a UT TV channel, very successful, we've maintained it for a long time, Justin knows more about it than I do, but Channel 8 and 15, if you're a Spectrum subscriber, at the end of the day, the network architecture, the guts of the system are, it is the equivalent to a 20-year-old car with a remanufactured engine with parts that we've scavenged out of the U-Pic, U-Pay junkyard, and we're running out of parts, and we can't find them, so.
It's on life support.
Yeah, it's on life support, so, we have, they have gotten every ounce out of that system that they can, you know, with Justin, Brandon, and now Lieutenant Blankenship patching and repairing it, we have the ability to conduct a hardware upgrade for approximately $35,000, there are the ability to integrate streaming apps, there was, Justin did a great job doing a very succinct white paper memo for the board here, you know, interestingly, we have about 5,500 cable TV subscribers.
How many?
5,500.
You're kidding me?
Yeah, well, it's, you figure, what is it, a quarter of that?
Yeah, that's, that's video subscribers, not, not just internet or...
Yeah, right, right, so you've got about 20, 20,000-ish, 20,000-ish accounts, if you go off of our aggregation, you figure aggregation, you've got about 20,000 accounts, about a quarter of them have Spectrum.
But that doesn't translate over to actually having viewing statistics and no...
No, we don't.
Okay, you're talking about how many Spectrum customers we get.
Spectrum customers, and they all have access to our public TV.
I was like, you've got to be, there's no way.
Yes, they have, yeah, they have access to our, they have cable television, they have access to our public channels.
That's the closest we can get to viewership numbers.
Yeah, that, that, everything else is proprietary and that, and so, you know, this system has the ability to increase streaming app, you know, performance, Justin, what else, it can potentially broadcast live the meetings, is that correct?
Right, so, as you kind of alluded to, the issue is, is how people get their media now, so as far as local television goes, cable isn't the only game, when I started doing this, yeah, it certainly was, so, the, the new systems would allow for a lot more streaming, we could actually stream, so right now we stream these meetings on YouTube, we could actually stream them live on the cable channels as well, for those who want to use that for viewing, there is also the option of mobile apps, Roku, Firestick.
Apple TV.
And Apple TV apps, so you can get it on your phone, your tablet, your, your television at home, without having to be specifically with Spectrum cable, because up till now that's been the only option to view, to view UT TV, so, PEG Television is public education and government, so you have the public access part of it, where people can come in, they can check out a camera, I'll show them how to use it, help them with editing, we don't see as much of that anymore, those that are still contributing are a lot more doing it themselves, but we do still have those public programs, some churches and some other things like that, and then of course the government educational, so, you know, covering township and school district meetings.
Just part of that, too, there was some legislation, Senate Bill 117 that went through, it was effective in September of 2007, there's a significant utilization clause in there, so if our system were to break down for any given time, and they, there's some, some provisions in here, like what constitutes significant utilization, or whatever, it's so many hours of programming over so many length of time, or whatever, if that happens, they can claw those channels back, and we lose those channels, as per that legislation, so, really what I was looking for tonight is just some direction from the board, you know, in lieu of just bringing a purchase order in front of you, we, I think we've done the best we can with the system to where we are, we do need, we kind of face a crossroads here, what do we do, kind of want to feel, get a feel for where the board wants to do it, I personally believe UT TV is a valuable asset, particularly to those folks who may be less internet inclined, less app, less mobile inclined, because they still will watch that, or they may be able to download the app on their TV in lieu of, you know, going to YouTube or whatever, and sorting through that, we still will maintain our YouTube platform, I think that's a useful, you know, platform to have there, but, you know, with what we do, I'm all about getting as much out to as many avenues as we can, and if we can enhance the capability of that, I mean, that's my take on it, so, and we, and as I said, we have gotten every dollar out of our last investment, so.
Trustee Dills?
I'm going to defer for a minute.
Trustee Becker?
Yeah, I got some thoughts on this, my thoughts are that we do nothing tonight, no decision made, and the reason I say that is I want to kick the can down the road very intentionally, since the audience is the non-internet crowd, for the most part, that we're talking about here, and we don't know how big that audience is, let's reach out to them via our newsletter.
Oh, you're going to say the camera right now, I thought maybe you were going to say something provoking to, to hear from them.
No, the, no, that's fine, yeah.
If you're out there, let us know.
If you're out there, let us know, but no, I, no, I said, let's put it in, in the newsletter specifically, some kind of blurb in there that says, hey, you know, we're, you know, call us if you watch UT TV, you know, something of that nature, let's see how many people reach out, we can put something on social media too, of course, and that way, you know, maybe the grandkids of, hey, grandma, you know, you might want to, you know, pay attention to us or something, and, and get feedback from the public, is there really a lot of usage demand out there, and if it's minimal, we can it, and if it is substantial, well then we continue it, those are my thoughts.
Can it, meaning no more...
Let it die. No more investment.
Okay, no more investment, and just stick with the live stream that we do on YouTube as far as our...
Of course, of course, yes.
Our public record and recording.
We're just talking about the cable TV piece of it.
Okay, I am, I'm interested to hear, looking at the white paper, this just references overall, replace the current broadcasting hardware with a, with, and software with a modern flexible system that offers the following enhancements, so, is there an acquisition pathway for getting this, do you have to go competitive, are you able to go direct, is it a name brand that you're identified, what is it?
So, so it's under, it's under $75,000.
So you can go direct?
Go direct, Justin had sourced it through Telview Corporation, which is a company of Laurel, New Jersey.
That's not the only thing available, there are a couple others.
There are others, but we have a quote, just to give you an example of, you know, what you could procure, so you're going to be around the 35, 36,000, probably the apps are probably, what?
Right, so...
1,200 for five, 300 apiece.
Yeah, so with that particular vendor, and I was speaking with the director of another center just last week, and he recommended something else, which I've been looking at, which looks maybe even, maybe even easy, maybe even a better fit, but that particular vendor, and I'm assuming everyone's going to be similar, they were, I want to say it was right, about $3,000 per app, they offered up to five of them, however you bought multiple ones, you got significant discounts, as long as you bought them together with that initial package.
Package.
Package, yeah, so.
For a year, was it one time, what is that?
For the apps, it was a one-time fee, and then there's some subscription fees that are in that quote, that are for the streaming piece, and it's all, that is all covered in that, with that particular vendor, obviously we have somebody else that might offer a little different, but...
And we can research multiple vendors, but, you know.
What does it cost to currently, to run UT TV currently? Is there a per-month cost?
I don't know what the per-month cost is, right now, probably the biggest...
Did you hear Mr. Wright?
Probably just me.
Well, it's just staff, it's just staff, and then, you know, whatever replacement parts we have to put into the system if we're able to find them when it breaks, I think there's some licensing, some manual licensing on some programming software that actually organizes the schedule, off the top of my head, I'm not sure, is that, what's the name of that software?
That's, uh...
FASIL?
FASIL, yeah.
FASIL?
What, when we're not doing these meetings, which is as exciting as they are, what plays all day and night, so tomorrow, tomorrow Wednesday, or, yeah, tomorrow's Wednesday?
You're on repeat in perpetuity.
What plays all day and night, what plays at 2:00 in the morning, what plays at 2:00 in the afternoon?
Um, I don't, I don't have the schedule memorized, although I've been, I've been putting that schedule together for almost 20 years, so, I should have it memorized, but, you know, there's only so much space, right, I, I wasn't the, I wasn't the 3.7
That's okay, that's okay.
Guy either, so, but, so, two channels, so Channel 8 is the government channel, so we're going to have these meetings, which, when I'm, when I'm, when I need to repeat, this is probably the meeting that gets preference, zoning meetings and school district meetings, because we have a part of the township that's in another school district, Norfolk School District, we put those meetings on there, and the county commissioner meetings, and those, that's not a whole lot of content, so those we repeat quite a bit, so, at 2:00 in the morning you're going to see it, at 2:00 in the afternoon you're going to see it, and so forth.
Okay.
On Channel 15, we have, we have some churches that are around there, we have some, some of the things that are submitted, gospel music program, a lot of it's sort of in those sort of things, and then, just for fun, I found a site that had, uh, movies that are so old nobody cares anymore, public domain, public domain movies, so you might turn on at 2:00 in the morning and find an old black and white movie from the 30s.
We have no idea to see what a real viewership is, right?
It, as far as specific views, like you can see on, on YouTube, just, just anecdotal.
You all can tell by my questions, like, you all can kill it or we can keep it, I really don't care, I'm not watching it, I'm not going to, and, like, I, I bet you if I took a survey of the 50,000-ish plus residents, I, I bet you that number is less than 1% that actually watch it, I, I could, I mean, I don't know, it's just me spitballing, but I bet you nobody even knows that we have UT TV on Channel 5 and Channel 8, and, so, I, I will defer, I'm not going to, this is, it's $30,000, it's, it's money, I don't want to spend money, but at the same time, it's not like, it's not like it's killer, I'm clearly not this audience, I don't think I know a single person in my circle that would watch this, and nobody wants to watch our ugly faces 24 hours, so, that's just me, but if, if the older folks that don't have internet watch it, and if they really like it, then Roger that, let's keep it, so I'm, I'm indifferent, but I would lean a little bit towards the no, just a little bit, so, I'm like, you know, 48, 52 on this one, so.
All right, thank you, I, I don't have cable, I personally have never seen it, I'm looking at the, the contract line items here in the description, see a mix between software and hardware, I would at least want to get more information as to what this capability is versus other capabilities, I'd like to definitely make sure that if we would lean forward with any type of future cost to have greater transparency to the public through a dedicated landing page that's on our website, that is the TV basically channel that we're talking about, that's, that's the way I'm interpreting this, just like you can go to congress.gov and you can see any time that that's in session, but I'm also interpreting that it could play whatever they wanted to, to, to stream in there, so if residents had something, et cetera, I won't get into the programming of it, my concern is more on the return on the investment, and essentially that we would, government owns a government reference architecture, and that meaning that we're not vendor locked into this Telview, or whoever else it may be, that when time comes, that if we need to have some competition, we can do that, basically modular open source architecture that allows you to compete different things out, maybe new capabilities, because tech is moving fast, so, you know, it shouldn't...
How long does it lock us, Justin, how long does it lock us? If we do this, how long does it lock us in?
I'm getting to the part of vendor lock based off the fact if we buy hardware, and it's like, we just spent $35,000, but four years later, it's like, hey, all we really need is this awesome HD camera, because we have to upgrade, and those things go live to our website, that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
Yeah, their, hardware can either be locked down, kind of like your cell phone, it can either be like, if you've got a Verizon phone, you buy one, you can only use it on Verizon's network, or it can be open architecture, I don't, you know, we don't, we'd have to look into that.
That's, yeah, that's, 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 the way to avoid and get away from vendor lock there is the government basically looking for the solution that is like that, hey, we got to upgrade these cameras at some point in time, and we want to make sure that they can interface with so many different systems through an API, and it's basically an open source architecture that we don't ever get just locked into, that's the only vendor supply.
We actually did that with our phones a few years ago, we went to open architecture on our phones, instead of buying like the, I'll just throw them out there, I mean, they were a great provider, but, like, if you go through Avaya, like, you've got to buy their stuff, it's locked down, if you go open architecture, you can pick, there's a lot of open architecture programs you can use, so, I mean, we can dig in on, more on that, whether it's, whether there's hardware that's open architecture, if it's all proprietary, you know, that, we can look at that.
Yeah, that's, that's my, that'd be my preference.
The, the read I get on it right now is, we're okay right now, but, you know, we've got to have this discussion.
What do you think, Justin, you're the one that runs the program, what do you think?
So, across public, PEG television, sort of across the board, this has been a discussion that's come up everywhere, some places, some townships and cities have gone the way you discussed, just put, just put the meetings on YouTube, and others have gone the way that this, where... And others have gone the way that this, where it sort of expands it. The issue, that you're, you're right on. The issue is how many viewers do we have if the only place you can get into the spectrum? So that's why I'm looking at this system that allows for anyone who has a phone in their pocket, anyone who has smart TV at home, put these apps on there and get, and get right to us. And it, ultimately, it's where you see the value of it, you know? The, the public access part of it, you know, that's, that's what I've done for a long time, and that's, you know, other people who, from the community, get their stuff on, on cable. I think if we, if we go, well, if we go to just YouTube, right, we're not going to be putting stuff that we don't own, the township doesn't own, on that. So with that, that piece, we would lose. Are there other outlets for those people that didn't exist, you know, twenty years ago when I started doing this? Sure. So it really comes down to, do we feel like that demographic that may be watching it still on cable, the sort of traditional way? Is that, is there enough value there, enough individuals there that we want to spend this? I feel like if we're spending this much money, we're kind of committing to it for maybe another ten years. I don't know. So that's.
And maybe I'll agree with Mr. Becker as well. I don't, I don't want them to call in the office. That's a lot of phone calls, but if there's some kind of email or some kind of survey monkey we can throw in the newsletter, I'd be more inclined for that, to give some feedback. That goes out to every resident just about, so, something like that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, so, you know, we're here to serve the public. If the public wants this, then we'll provide it, no problem. And that's what we need to find out, do they want it? You know, when I hear things about, you know, the fire sticker, whoever, and, and survey monkey, we're talking about people who have the internet. They have access to YouTube. If they have access to YouTube, they don't need YouTube, UT TV. It's super plus, I guess is the word. So that's, that's the argument to kill it. But I do want to give the people the opportunity, find out how many, I might be surprised how many people are out there that they don't have, they don't have a computer, they don't have, you know, they don't have YouTube, they don't have the internet, and they don't want it. But they do want to watch UT TV. How many people are out there that fit that description? So I'd like to say, we put it in the newsletter, like, wait, it goes into their mailboxes, they have the opportunity to let us know. And if we don't hear from a significant number of people, and I don't know what the word significant means, but I guess we'll know the number when we see it, then we, then the decision will be obvious.
Completely agree. I'm always for hearing from the people. Have a record of voting that way, so let's, let's look at how we do that. Gentlemen, are we good with this agenda item?
Thank you, Justin. Appreciate you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Justin.
I'll go ahead and we'll, I'll work with Justin and Lisa. We'll work on a multifaceted message communication survey, you know, tool, maybe a QR code in the newsletter where somebody can get right to it and go from there. So let's see what we get, see what happens.
We got some volunteers wanting to go knock on some doors, pop their heads in, say, hey, what's on TV? You watching UT TV? Any takers? Mr. Dills?
Sure, sure.
I mean.
I can, I can follow that, I can follow that playbook. We'll start working on that. So that's what I needed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, item three, ODOT, Mike's Express Sidewalk Agreements. Gentlemen, do we have a motion to approve an interim maintenance agreements contract between the Union Township and the Ohio Department of Transportation, and separately, Union Township and Mike's Express, number sixteen LLC, for the maintenance of sidewalk required in conjunction with the development of Clement County Corso ID, number four-one-three-two-one-six alpha zero-zero-three, and situating from the public right of way of state route one-twenty-five, Union Township, Clement County, Ohio, on further authorizing, township administration execute any and all documentation furtherance of the same. Do we have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item Charlie, legislation agenda. Gentlemen, item one, resolution twenty-two-five dash thirty-one, resolution approving establishment of the Union Township New Community Authority. Do we have that motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-five dash thirty-one, determining that the establishment of the Union Township New Community Authority will be conducive to the public safety, convenience, welfare is intended, and the result of development of new community declaring the Union Township New Community Authority to be an organized as a body politic and corporate, defining the boundaries of the new community district, appointing board members, and approving related matters. Do we have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing any discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item two, resolution twenty-two-five dash thirty-two, then announced certificate beach trees. Adopt resolution twenty-five thirty-two, authorizing township's foster issue, then announced certificate for payment of expenses. Do we have that motion, gentlemen?
So moved.
Second.
Have any discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item three, resolution twenty-two-five dash three-three, amend, amended FY twenty, twenty-five permanent appropriations resolution. Gentlemen, do we have that motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-five dash thirty-three, approving amended calendar year twenty-two-five permanent appropriations resolution for Union Township?
So moved.
Do we have that motion? Hearing no roll call, or hearing no discussion. Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And item four, resolution twenty-two-five dash thirty-four, resolution authorizing property acceptance and license agreement. Gentlemen, do we have a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-five dash thirty-four, authorizing acceptance of improved property for public use, and further authorizing execution of certain license agreements in accordance of assuring provisions for adequate continuing maintenance?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing no discussion. Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item five, resolution twenty-two-five dash thirty-five, nuisance abatement resolution. Adopt resolution twenty-two-five dash thirty-five, authorizing the abatement and removal of vegetation, noxious weeds, garbage, trash, and debris pursuant to section five oh five, twenty-eight seven of the Highway Code of the following properties. Fun.
Yep.
Item one, five-five-seven, Glenderos Lane, Cincinnati, Ohio, four-five-two-four-four. Item two, six-zero-one, Comet Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio, four-five-two-four-four. Do we need the pins? Item three, six-seven-five, Redwood Court, Cincinnati, Ohio, four-five-two-four-four. Item four, six-seven-five, Woodgate Road, Cincinnati, Ohio, four-five-two-four-four. Item five, eight-four-eight, Hawthorne Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio, four-five-two-four-four, two-four-five. Item six, one-two, one-zero, Pood Drive, Batavia, Ohio, four-five-one-zero-three. P-O-O-D, Poodi, Pood Drive. I've never been there.
I have, I know where it's.
You know where it's at?
Did you drive all those addresses, Mr. Becker?
Item seven, four-one.
Not this time.
You knock on the door and ask them if they watch UT TV?
Nope. But a guy I'm thinking of.
Now you're thinking about it. Yeah, item seven, four-one-two-four, Forsythia Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio, four-five-two-four-five. Item eight, four-two-two-one, Silver Streak Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio, four-five-two-four-five. Item nine, four-five-eight-five, East Gate Boulevard, Cincinnati, Ohio, four-five-two-four-five. Item ten, four-six-eight-seven, Galaxy Lane, Cincinnati, Ohio, four-five-two-four-four. Item eleven, four-seven-eight-four, Timbernold Road, Batavia, Ohio, four-five-two-four-four. Item twelve, four-eight-zero-seven, Teal Town Road, Milford, Ohio, four-five-one-five-oh. Item thirteen, four-eight-one-seven, Powder Horn Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio, four-five-two-four-four. Item fourteen, four-eight-six-zero, Teal Lane, Milford, Ohio, four-five-one-five-zero. Item fifteen, four-eight-six-two, Teal Lane, Milford, Ohio, four-five-one-five-zero. Do we have that motion, gentlemen?
So moved.
Second. I was going to ask, could repeat.
Yeah, of course you would. Any, any discussion, gentlemen?
No. Poor, poor Mr. Berkey. Send him our best, Mr. Ray.
Yeah, when you flip through and you look at these pictures.
Yeah, I saw them.
Yeah.
They're pretty bad.
And so it seems like it's kind of, I don't know, is that, is that on an uptick, or is it just coming in as a batch? I mean, typically it's that time of year, but fifteen's probably, I'd say that's the most I've had come through, and one batch, so.
Make sure to take Mr. Berkey out of lunch. He's much deserved.
He's got his work cut out for him this summer.
Well, people need to understand we're serious about, about the nuisance here. And, and, you know, if, the, the, the thing here is, if you don't take care of your property, and you force us to enter into these nuisance actions, we're going to take care of it for you, and then you're going to get invoiced for it. So it's, this is serious stuff, and, you know, it's not right for your neighbors that keep their places nice. And, you know, please, I'm pleading, will you take this serious? Because it gets expensive. We have to hire people.
Yeah, hopefully this will serve as a wake-up call for some individuals. And again, I know it's, things we've checked on too. Is there, you know, is everyone all right in the house? Do they need, any type of services? And it's something that we can recognize as well, too, so.
Yep, Mr. Ray.
All part of the due diligence.
No, go ahead, Mr. How many warnings do they get before it gets to this point?
So Mr. Berkey will give them a yellow tag. That's what we call them, a yellow tag. And typically, most of these have been in the hopper for a couple of weeks before we prepare the legislation. He will get those out, you know, he'll go out a second time. Because of the volume this year of the complaints, there are, you know, varying windows. Some of those date back two or three weeks. They've had a chance to cure them, and then on reinspection, they're not done. Sometimes people don't abate them fully, and we have to, you know, send a message that that's not sufficient. And, you know, I, I ran into one from the last month where they sent us a, a communication like, hey, I mowed my front yard. Why am I getting a citation? It's like, well, it wasn't just the front thirty feet, it was the whole yard. And that was an effective enough communication that once it's declared, we can work with them to abate it, but they have to know that we're serious and that there's an enforcement mechanism. And the threat of an assessment is, you know, powerful because they're not cheap. They are not cheap. It's several hundred dollars with our time and all the costs that go into reviewing these and reinspections. So, I, I don't want to cut any grass. I don't want to cut anybody's grass, but we will if you don't want to. I mean, that's just the message we're sending, so.
Our time is significantly more expensive doing this than when we are so extremely transparent to the public for basically no cost, right? We don't charge any, any cost to the public at this point for record requests and things of that nature.
No.
I know, I know, I know there's new statute that's in line.
Body camera footage that is in the records handbook, that there is some fees for.
That's the new update, right?
Yes, that was the only thing.
Because people have been exploiting it, is that right? People, people take.
Body camera footage.
People were trying to be like social media influencers and stuff, and they basically pass their costs to the local government to try to get videos and.
It's very expensive to redact all that footage.
Build their own social following and earn money off of it. Yeah. That's a, frankly, travesty of freedoms there, but all right. All right, do we have that roll call, please?
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Gentlemen, comments from the board. Trustee Dills.
I want to have a little discussion on this. It's really not even us three. It's also all the department heads as well up here. Unless there's a crazy case that requires a lot of bait, and a lot, a lot of debate, and a lot of, you know, public comments. And I feel like, you know, when, when we first took office, Mr. Becker, three and a half years ago, because COVID happened, and then when COVID was happening, Mike, back then, you all went down to one meeting per month because of COVID. And we just kept that going. We just adopted it, right? So I feel like we get all of our business done with, with the second Tuesday of the month. I just wanted to revisit it, and, but not only us three, but if there's any department heads as well that feel like, hey, we, we need to go back to two, or reconsider it, or are we doing, are we doing okay? Like, for example, we're getting ready to get out of here now. So hour and twenty minutes, perfect, and we got monthly businesses taken care of. I, I don't see the need to waste anyone's time. And, you know, being in the world of business, I don't have meetings to have meetings just because we said we're going to have a meeting. Like, let's, let's get it done, get to the point, let's get out of here and go do our job. So just wanted to open it up in thoughts on that. And besides that, I think we're having a great month. And once the rains goes away, I think we're going to be really killing it with some new projects. So open discussion on that, and then also defer to you two on, on your comments.
Mr. Becker, you got any thoughts on that?
I'm happy with the way things are going. I haven't heard any.
Cool.
Suggestions from the staff, the directors, or even the public?
I, I don't count executive session as, because that's, that's us, and that's not really wasting anybody's time or whatever. But as far as getting business done during the normal business hours, non-executive session time, you know, I feel like we're, I feel like we're fine. But, um.
Yeah.
And normally I wouldn't do that, but I mean, is there any directors, department heads up here that would like to see two? Are we okay with the one? We feel like we're getting business done?
Do you need more time from us, basically? Do you need more input from us, authority from us, higher frequency? No? Seeing none?
Okay.
Seeing none?
Oh, I got you.
Yeah, no, I, I'm a, I'm a big proponent of efficient government. And yeah, to that point, I've never heard any credible complaint or concern with the frequency of the business meetings that we have. And if you ever look at timeliness of business meetings, you're exactly spot on. Executive session is for the board to actually be at work and together, and, and that's, that's great. Township trustees, a really interesting environment where you're siloed off. We can only ever talk right here in front of all of you about, you know, the township business. And then there's obviously some sense of nature, aspects that were afforded the, the, the state law to be able to talk privately about, but not have any decisions. So, so that, and then public hearings. I mean, look, was that maybe a month, two months ago? We had a public hearing. It was about the golf, the golf course project. And giving the residents their time to be heard is extremely beneficial, because at the end of that public hearing, and this has happened multiple times now, working with you gentlemen up here, and I appreciate this, that people have said, vote didn't go their direction that they wanted, but we renewed their faith in local government because we had open minds and open ears to listen to them, and we didn't get short with them, and we didn't cut them off. We're professional with them. And we shared the, you know, the dichotomy of the decision matrix that we have to kind of work through of that, what's our actual jurisdiction, or, you know, what's, what's not infringing on someone else's right, because someone may or may not like a project. So I think they're, you know, that's, that's just good government. So, no, great question. So thanks for bringing it up. Anything else, Trustee Dills? So I got, Trustee Becker?
Mr. Chairman, like the last meeting, I, once again, have a lengthy update.
Oh, no.
Do we, for what?
Should I go to, should I have recess? No. What's your lengthy update?
Drum, drum roll, please.
Hold on.
So I, I spent the last couple of weeks and a lot of hours doing research. One of those is the public has been asking me in person, social media, what's going on with the East Gate Mall? What's going on with Kroger? My answer's been the same. Well, they're in court until there's a decision and an appeal, and who knows what else. Nothing. And there's kind of no hope. So what I've been curious about all this time is what happened when Kroger bought Sears? What agreements did they have with the owners of the mall at that time? And then what, what is the, the new ownership of the mall, that's the, that's the Hall Group? What is their argument against Sears, I'm sorry, against Kroger, that they filed for injunction to stop the demolition? So, and then I wanted to see their, the Kroger response to that. So I obtained all of the court records on what's going on with all of this, and no decision has been made yet, at least not the last time I looked, which might have been yesterday. It's in Victor Haddad's courtroom. So what I want to do is, first off, in these documents, and I went through, I don't know, thirty-some odd documents and exhibits, and it was six-hundred-and-fifty-three pages. Yes, I really am anal. I reviewed, I reviewed six-hundred-and-fifty-three pages. And, and a lot of it was two kids on a schoolyard just sniping at each other, you know? Yes, I did, or yes, you did, no, you didn't, you know, that, that type of thing. And, and some, some of the attorney arguments, I just found comical. But regardless, what I want to tell the public is what I've learned. And there's fascinating stuff in these documents, and they are all public records, so I'm not disclosing anything out of school here that anybody can go, 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 go get, go get this information. So I just want to give the public an update on what I know, and, and this is everything I know. So first off, to kind of set the stage, a little more, so just some basic information. The East Gate Mall has eleven owners, five of which have veto power. And those five, they're, they're Dillard's, Grammas, the Hall, Hall Group, J.C. Penny, and Kroger. The good news with all this, and I want you all to mark your calendars, March fourth, twenty-thirty, March fourth, twenty-thirty, that's the date, the covenants, that's the contract with, with all the easements in it, and establishing the, the rights of all the owners. Those covenants expire on that date, and then this, this, the court actions. Those covenants expire on that date, and then this, this, the court actions of this nature go away. So it'll, it'll certainly change the environment with the mall and, I guess, allow it more freedom to be developed, let me put it that way. So I told you the documents I was after, so some timelines on this, and it was in July of twenty-one, Kroger purchased Sears. The following year then, Kroger came to us to get a, I saw that.
Your kids are waving.
I thought you were telling me to speed it up.
No, no, the kids were waving, and I was leaving them back.
Kroger came to us for site plan approval, which we approved. In August of twenty-three, so a year after that, then it was the, the Hall Group purchased the, you know, the, the Eastgate Mall. So that's the, the main section, the inside quarters of the mall. So, but, so after Hall made the purchase in August, Hall and Kroger were communicating with each other. And those communications are in the court records, which I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you about this evening, and they were playing nice. Things went south. I don't, not sure why exactly, but it didn't work out. And then push came to shove, and they've been fighting ever since. It was in December of twenty-three, the temporary restraining order was issued, and then there was a trial in September of twenty-four. So since the trial, there's been some other documents, and I guess I reviewed all those documents, and we're waiting on, on the judge to make a decision. So my intent here, so I got like four pages of notes, one of which is, is a graphic depiction of a site plan. I've got a page with Kroger arguments and a page with the Hall Group arguments. And, you know, so, you know, so I'm gonna try to fairly present both sides to the best of my ability. I'm not taking sides here, and I'm certainly not an attorney. So I'm not gonna give some kind of legal opinion of what I think of their arguments, because I'm not qualified to do that. Okay, so the plaintiff, the plaintiff is the Hall Group. So I got three major bullet points here, and then I got some transcript quotes that are gonna be interesting. So the plaintiff argument, which again, that's the Hall Group, the owner of the Eastgate Mall, that's the, the inside corridors. Their argument's real simple, breach of contract. And, you know, again, I'm not, I don't have a legal mind to know what breach of contract actually means in terms of, you know, when it can be enforced, when it can't. But that's what they're arguing over, and it's breach of contract with irreparable harm. The second point is, and this is, so this is out of, out of the documents, this is really the, what comes down to Hall's argument against Kroger, the most telling piece of this. With this proposed construction and orientation, the new loading dock area and trash dumpster area for the new store will be located in the newly created gap between the mall building and the new rear wall of the new store, which also happens to face the main boulevard entrance of the mall development itself. And then this third bullet point, this is where the plaintiff is arguing that the defendant, defendant is Kroger, is not coming to the table with clean hands. So that's, that's part of this argument. Kroger does not want to build its store in a cooperative fashion with the Hall Group as required by the covenants, because Kroger, this is interesting, Kroger desires to block out, block or box out Costco from coming into the mall property. Kroger views Costco as a competitor in the marketplace. Kroger purchased the Sears parcel, so Costco could not purchase the parcel. Now, frankly, I don't get that. I mean, you know, I don't know how many people decide, am I gonna go to Sam's, am I gonna go to Walmart for groceries? You know, why, why Kroger thinks Costco? I don't know. I don't get that at all. But regardless, that's in the record. So here's some stuff from the transcript itself. So the, the attorney for Hall, he asked a question to, to one of the, this is on cross-examination, one of the witnesses for Kroger. And his Hall attorney is Chris Finney. Some of you might know him. He's got an office here in Eastgate. Says, I'd like you to turn to the plaintiff's exhibit forty-eight and tell me what that is. So the witness gives, gives a description, says, this is email correspondence regarding the project submittal for approval to our capital committee. We always ask if there's a potential competitive impact in this market. And the conversation was, we always knew, we had heard that Costco had a backup offer on the site. So that would be a backup offer on the Sears site that Kroger bought. So that's the correspondence related to that discussion. Then the attorney followed up and asked the witness to read her response, her email response. And, and this is a direct quote. Yes, I believe we should include the value of the Costco competitor impact as a benefit. We were able to successfully purchase the Sears parcel to block Costco from entering the Eastgate Mall trade area at this location. This provides us a competitive advantage from a timing perspective. Just pulling a Kroger property does not preclude Costco from finding another site in the market. I have been asked by the brokers representing Costco and Menards if we would sell our site. Then I want to go to the defense, the Kroger arguments here, and I got five of these, and I'm gonna pause to show graph. First one, so, and, and some of the wording on this, I've changed it just to make it kind of flow better with the presentation that I'm doing here. So if you're looking for, you know, direct quotes in the, in the actual original documents, some of the wording I changed a little bit, just, just for flow. Plaintiff, plaintiff cannot prevail because the covenant, number one, the covenants are not enforceable, either because they have been waived, because changed circumstances no longer support their enforcement, and/or because the covenants no longer have substantial value. And/or, two, the Hall Group unreasonably withheld its consent to, to Kroger's development on Kroger's property. Number two. All of the original owners have waived the covenants the Hall Group seeks to enforce because they no longer have any value to all the owners, much less substantial value, the key legal requirement. I don't know if that's true or not. That's Kroger's argument. Number three, perhaps most importantly, even the Hall Group does not really want to maintain the current mall configuration or to keep operating it as an enclosed mall subject to the covenants. After all, in September two oh two three, the Hall Group submitted to Kroger a proposed mall redevelopment site plan, demolishing the mall and obliterating the current configuration to accommodate Menards and apartments. Notably, that plan looks strikingly similar to the Union Township's master plan in which the current enclosed mall configuration is demolished and apartments are built. So I'm gonna, so I got two more of these, but I'm gonna pause for a moment, because what I want to show you, and I know nobody can see this, but I'm just kind of setting it up if I can. But this is the site plan that is in the court record that was submitted by the Hall Group to Kroger's. And it shows that Dillard's, McColl's, J.C. Penney, those are all their original locations, none of that moves. Some new stores, an Academy Sports, Marshall's, Menards, and the Kroger. On the top side of this graph, you have apartments that kind of wrap around where the old, the movie, movie theaters used to be over on the, on the I-275 side, wraps around the north side, property along Old Seventy-four, and then over towards Firestone. So this is all showing apartment buildings. And I'm gonna kind of set that up. Maybe the camera can zoom in on that. Does that work? Yes. And I'm gonna slide this down to my colleagues. So they're looking at the same thing that's on the clipboard. Okay, so Kroger's defense, this is the last page I have here. Two, two more bullet points. No reasonable person wants the vacant Sears building and the mall to keep operating in the same manner for five more years. Clearly, none of the other owners do. Union Township does not either. Letting the mall decline further to enforce covenants that expire in five years for the benefit of an out-of-state owner defies logic, reasonableness, and fair dealing. This is where both sides are kind of pointing a finger at each other that they're not good actors, and they're, you know, they're not coming to the table with clean hands. And the last one, when a community burdened with restrictive covenants has changed, a court has the authority to declare them no longer enforceable. Kroger is simply asking the court to endorse legally what is already known to every citizen in Claremont County. The Eastgate Mall is dead. While I was over at the Eastgate Mall yesterday, it is definitely not dead. There's, there's a lot of businesses that, that are, look like they're doing pretty well over there. You know, I'd encourage the public to go, to go over there. Look, look for yourself, you know, go for a walk around the mall. It's good exercise. Stop at Annie's, get a pretzel, you know, or, you know, the, the food court. So my thoughts on, you know, who's gonna win is frankly, based on all these arguments I'm seeing, again, I'm, I'm not looking at it from a legal perspective because, you know, I just don't have a knowledge base, but I wouldn't be surprised either way, the judge rules. And regardless of how the judge rules, I do expect an appeal, and this may wind up in the Ohio Supreme Court. That wouldn't surprise me either. But at the end of the day, I think Kroger wins this, and the reason I say that, because they could win this case. They could win in the twelfth, twelfth district appellate court. They could win at the Ohio Supreme Court. On March fourth, twenty thirty, they win. Game over. So, you know, all they have to do is run out the clock. And with that, gentlemen, that concludes my, once again, lengthy update.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. I just can quickly share, gentlemen, I saw that Natasha Adams is leaving or has left West Claremont School District. Mr. Wright, I, I, and I'll give it to the board, but Ed, as we're partners with, worked a lot with her office, et cetera, over the years. Is there anything that you'd want to do to reach out, send her something? I don't really know the story. To me, honestly, it was rather abrupt, I felt like. And maybe that's just the manner in which they want to handle things. But as far as goodwill and good rapport that we've always had with Natasha, I would have minded putting something together to just say thanks for serving the community, so.
I'm happy to serve my work on something for the board. We had the opportunity to, I've had the opportunity to meet with the incoming superintendent, and he is previously an assistant superintendent with West Claremont. It was a very good meeting. He was just, hi, how are you? Good to see you. Very, very positive.
Yeah.
This is Dr. Folds.
Okay. Yeah. And Natasha's also a resident, right?
Anderson.
The community?
Was it Anderson?
I believe she was Anderson.
I thought it was because of the Adams Heating and Cooling that's located here, so.
The business is here.
They do.
The family business is here.
Significant investment there.
Yeah, very nice facility for Adams, Adams Heating and Cooling, that is Natasha's husband, and, yeah, so anyway, that was just, want to highlight that. So open to whatever comes forward with that. I, thanks for the update. The really most significant, those, those entities are gonna fight, they're gonna fight in court. They'll, you know, they'll, they'll do what they want to do for their own business intelligence on that. But the most significant thing that I always appreciated was listening to the residents, getting community feedback. That was through that listening sessions that we did put on to have the residents tell us what they'd like to see at the Eastgate Mall location. You know, it's, it's very short-sighted to just say, well, that's only Eastgate Mall and don't look anywhere else. No, I mean, look, look at Glenessie-Withamsville Road here and all the property that Union Township owns through the swath there by Gentry, all the way down to Police Station, all the way down to Veterans Park. To me, I call that, in my mind, gentlemen, the Main Street Project. I think that's the area to be dense. I don't, you know, I'd like to see the head nods from my residents and the, and the, you know, and the seats out here if they not like that idea. But I think that's the area to be dense, and you protect the, you protect the other areas of the township that are not over, over dense with, with construction right now. But Main Street Project, make it kind of a destination, make it a place to go. You can get through Union Township very fast now, going out east with the ODOT improvements. I firmly believe that all the growth that's gonna come from the east is going to travel into this area and, and seek destination and see some type of entertainment, dining, et cetera. And so I think we need to give people a place to go, otherwise, you know, idle time is not good. And so I, I'd like to see some, maybe we do some preemptive zoning or planning still, Corey. I'd just like to continue to see, I know you're putting the foot on the gas, but I'd just like to continue to see what can we do with that concept of Main Street Project? So you gotta get Mr. Becker a greater ice cream. So also, kind of in that vein, big concepts on my mind. I mentioned to Mr. Taylor earlier, but what does it look like to up to our fields where, where does it make sense? What's the cost? What's the revenue generation? See a lot of sporting teams, a lot of community around that. And so I just, I think that that's really good for building the community. And then on the local government side, you know, I got, I was a very early interested party in artificial intelligence and what can be leveraged for efficiencies. I'm positive that there's more and more technology now available to local governments. I wouldn't mind to continue to see us take a significant look at that and, and just get an understanding of maybe where some things are going all the way through from in fiscal office with automating, you know, and interacting with records that we already have as public records that are obtainable and produced to people that look for it, so it can, it can help reduce the, the manpower aspect of that, but be more efficient and more effective at delivering to the public. But then also, I fundamentally see it also with the police department. I'm sure that, I mean, we had that, the investment into the body cams, and I'm not sure where they're tracking on this yet. But I do know that with that company, Chief Reese, that does the flock cameras, flock safety, they have a whole line of products that are going into more of the drones and everything else. But I believe also three sixty and three sixty like body cams on the officers. Not just those cameras, but it transcribes and it, it uses AI to generate the police report. And so to me, like, I don't know how much our officers are spending that amount of time on having to write reports, et cetera. But if we can keep them focused on their core duty and their core mission of policing, I mean, if I was a police officer in their shoes, I'd say, thank you for getting, you know, the paperwork out of my way. And so I think that'd be an incredible thing to look at. I think that's a real area that we can exploit, probably, because that's where we, we run through a lot of records. So just, I'd be happy to see someone, you know, take, take that sentiment from me and go run with it. And let's, let's break some glass if need be on, on doing something that would be efficient and effective for the, for the government and also for our officers. With that, gentlemen, that's all I have. Upcoming events, let's see, Township offices will be closed on Thursday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, observance of Juneteenth, federal holiday. Township offices will be closed on February, July fourth, twenty twenty-five, observance of Independence Day. Union Township Zoning Commission will be, will meet on Wednesday, June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, seven P.M. Union Township Board of Zoning Appeals, scheduled for July third, twenty twenty-five, at seven P.M., has been canceled due to no cases being filed. Union Township Board of Trustees' next regular meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, July eighth, twenty twenty-five, at six P.M. Farmers Market and Summer Concerts kicks off on Friday, it did just kick off on Friday, June sixth. The Farmers Market is held on Fridays from four to seven P.M. at the Civic Center campus from June sixth through September fifth, excluding Friday, July fourth. A wide range of products, including beef poultry, produce, sauces, honey, baked goods, milk, eggs, plants, and more will be available. Summer concerts will be held at the Civic Center Amphitheater on Friday, June thirteenth, July eighteenth, July twenty-fifth, and August first. Concerts begin at seven P.M. More details are available on the Township's website. Mad Cat Puppets will perform fantastic fairy tales on Saturday, June twenty-eighth, at ten A.M. Civic Center Amphitheater. Come enjoy a great, family-friendly performance.
Gentlemen, my son plays baseball on Fridays. Forgot that update, chief. That just dawned on me. So anyways, I'll, I'll have chief give an update on it real quick. But he plays every Friday at six thirty, and we got so many rained out, like, I think every single concert, it goes from six thirty to seven thirty. So probably won't be able to make too many concerts this summer. Chief, Clemens, did you need to give an update at all on, on that last game that both our sons battled at? Did you care to give an update?
I thought you, did you not already give the update?
Did I?
I think we gave an update on that.
Oh, can't have too many updates on that. Anyways, my son beat his son. That's all that matters.
Yeah.
It was a great, ferocious, exciting game. And anyways, till after.
Appreciate that. Thanks. All right, we will move forward for executive session. Gentlemen, you have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, before we, yeah, before we go to the executive session, I just want to make one last comment on this. So.
So I should have pointed out on the site plan, you got the Kroger is here where the Sears store currently is. Next to that shows us Menards. Everything behind here, which is the current mall, is all parking. And just my own editorial comment here, I really like the plan. I, I, I hope the hall group can pull this off and put it together. And, you know, they come to some kind of agreement with Kroger and make it happen. So, so I guess the message here to the public is there is hope and I got it here in my hand. So it's not going to be a dead mall, or Kroger's words, a dead mall forever. So change is coming. That's all, gentlemen.
Thanks. Yeah, you know, make, there's no crystal ball anywhere. You know, the state of Ohio did just what? They're looking at opening up that additional unclaimed money fund for different types of venues, et cetera. I don't know what it would look like, but why not be bold with pursuing a capital bill to do something significant at Eastgate Mall? I don't know, no one has crystal ball, but everyone can work forward on it together. Moving to request a motion to move into executive session pursuant to Ohio Reuse Code, Section 121.22 GOF, as follows. Consider the appointment employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employee or official pursuant to Ohio Reuse Code, Section 121.22 GOF-1. Item 2, preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations and bargaining sessions with public employees concerning the compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment pursuant to Ohio Reuse Code, Section 121.22 GOF-4. Item 3, to consider confidential information related to the marketing plan, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance or negotiation with other political divisions respecting and requesting for economic development assistance provided by both of the following conditions. Apply item alpha. The information is directly related to the request of economic development assistance and then provided administered under any provision of Chapter 715, 725, 1724, or 1728, or Section 701.07, 3735.67, to 3735.70, 5709.40, to 5709.43, 5709.61, to 5709.69, 5709.73, to 5709.75, to 5709.77, to 5709.81. Other Reuse Code or that involves public infrastructure improvements or extension of utility services that are directly related to an economic development project. In item B, in unanimous form of the public body determined by a roll call vote, that the executive session is necessary to protect the interests of the applicant or the possible investment or expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with economic development project pursuant to Ohio Reuse Code, Section 121.22 GOF-8. Do we have that motion, gentlemen?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing discussion, roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
We're into executive session at 7:50 p.m.
Good meeting, Chairman.
General Honor, entertain a motion to exit executive session with no action taken.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yep.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
We're out of executive session at 8:52 PM with no action taken.
Mr. Logan to take off, time restraint, such as us two, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
We're adjourned at 8:52 PM.
Thank you, Justin.